Hallelujah! Praise the name of Jesus. Lord, we appreciate you. Lord, we love you. Lord, we adore you. Lord, you are our great Jehovah. God with us. Lord, we are so happy to be in the house of God. Lord, we don't want to be in any other place now. Lord, we want to sit around your table. Lord, the feast on that manner. Hallelujah! Father, we worship you, Lord. We are so happy, Father, to make you to the house of God tonight. Father, we looking forward for a great blessing, Lord, in your world tonight, Lord. Father, I pray for a touching offering, so you come and bless it, Lord, for your fellowship of your kingdom. In Jesus' name, amen. Praise the name of Jesus. Jesus. Amen. Thank you, Lord Jesus. I would like to welcome once again each and every one in the house of the Lord, amen. Praise the Lord, amen. It's good to be in the house of the Lord, amen. Fellowship of God, amen. I would like to welcome once again your so-called Christians, brother and sister, all the apostles, men, and women. And the ministry members just like this. Bless the peace, amen. And also our Christians, elder and younger, amen. Amen. Brother, I would like to offer a song, amen. Thank you, Lord Jesus. What they should be want? It's a youth.
Yes.
Youth night, but I pray to feel that song tonight, amen. You know, God actually bless you with a wonderful break. A lot of young men, only one that's been married, the old man. Young people, young blood. God fully good. And I appreciate you, brothers. Don't need to excited, I see you. You're about to begin a challenge of the world. And God bless you, bless you, amen. And yeah, it's good to be in the house of the Lord, amen. God is so good for us, amen. Again, here, I hear you. Because he's so good to me. You know, my eldest son, William, he got a very big problem on his marriage. And God took him through and God opened for him a door. You know, he was just very hurt badly. But he's a child of God. You know, there was a sister from another church. She's one of my niece. It's a prayer, one of his sisters from another church. But virtually, he must respect also them. They asked me to come and pray for him. And one of the sisters asked his name. He said, "My name is William Marion." Because we give the name Marion, the proper name. She said to him, "You've got a particular name, young man. There's something I'm not working on, Esther. But you are the child of God." And you know, since God bless you, bless you. He got a five-year contract in Dubai. That's your family is going to flow to Dubai. We miss him. My wife is ready, said, "It's not the son for five years, but God bless you too." You want him, he said, "Papa, don't worry. This message I will never, never, never forget." I believe that for all of you, my dear God, this is what we are. So my dear one, my dear brothers and sisters, young ones, God bless you. Take what you have. This is the message from God. And without this, we can do nothing. We are nothing. You can have a house, you can have a car, you can have everything as well. But I am not, I am not believing that prophet. It's God has sent me. We not, oskan betiwa omi. And we pray that God will give us really yere bish oskan nadekhi, os bet, don't oskona. But yere sien kalki frana kame. Hallelujah. It says, "O par, fesat las hinas, atem nek ma gisne zu buh." Amen. Hallelujah. Ma kuma seka pone la kari. Jesu wena suela kala bari.
Hallelujah!
Praise the name of the Lord.
Yes, ma!
Hallelujah. Yeah, yeah. Jesu wena... Jesu wena suela kala bari. Kani baka na shi duh. Iyo, iyo kala bari. Iyo, bari, yo, leso. Nansu baka chelaga bari. Oh, yo, baka na shi duh. Iyo, 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 kala bari. Iyo, bari. Iyo, 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 kala bari. Iyo, 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 kala bari. Iyo, 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 kala bari. Nansu baka chelaga bari.
Hallelujah! Praise him! Hallelujah!
Oh, yo, iyo, kala bari. Oh, iyo, bari. Baka na shi duh. Nansu baka chelaga bari. Kani baka na shi duh. Iyo, iyo, kala bari. Iyo, iyo, kala bari. Iyo, 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 kala bari. Iyo, 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 kala bari. Iyo, 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 kala bari. Oh, iyo, bari. Iyo, 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 kala bari. Iyo, 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 kala bari. Iyo, iyo, kala bari. Iyo, iyo, kala bari. Glory! Amen, amen. Praise the Lord, amen. Praise the Lord, amen. Have time to the word, amen. Amen. I'd like to be Christ's side carry, man. My wife, she want to offer a song, amen. Come forward, man. Praise the Lord, amen. That's, that's, that's the heart of a young person. Amen. Never get old, amen. That's why a brother will never retire from the, from being a person.
First, I wanted to give thanks to you. It has been 12 months. For me, it's not only 12 months, but it's 12 times of his grace. This year has been a year that I've seen a lot of his hands inside my life. So I said, "I'll not end up just like I need to say right now." Here we are. Levantemos nuestras manos para ti. Aquí estamos. Adoramos tu santo nombre. Y cuando oramos, adoramos tu santo nombre. Tu es Dios, y te condes exaltado. Aquí estamos. Lifting our hands to you. Here we are. Giving you thanks for all you do. And as we praise and worship your holy name. You are here. Dwelling within our praise. Amen. For every answer praise. For all we see, they are yours. For love that carries when we call. For arms that lift us when we fall. For you have always been right beside us. Leading us all along the way. And we made it through because of you. And here we are again. Lifting our hands to you. Here we are. Giving you thanks for all you do. And as we praise and all we see. You are here. Dwelling within our praise. For days we cannot see. For all that's here to me. The trials we may have to face. When we believe on your race. Need to be your strength and safety. Your love that keeps us strong. And who we are. Will speak a song. And here we are. Lifting our hands to you. Here we are. Giving you thanks for all you do. And as we praise we look up your holy name. You are here. Dwelling within our praise.
Praise the Lord, amen. Can extend to get, amen. Wonderful song. Finally saying that grateful heart will always receive. Hallelujah, amen. Thank you, Lord Jesus. Are you ready to receive the word, amen? Thank you, Lord Jesus. Lord, we come to you in worship. No matter what the circumstances. For the resurrection. No matter what the circumstances. Oh, if I live until the day I will be dead. Oh, Mary, I adore you. I will all to worship you. And oh, Mary, I adore you. Oh, I believe in you. I will all to worship you. Oh, we come. Oh, we come. In worship. Oh, Mary, I the same. For the resurrection. Oh, Mary, I the same. To worship. Oh, yes, we're totally in worship. We're in worship. I will worship you, dear. Oh, yes, we're in worship. Mary, I adore you. I will all to worship you. Mary, I adore you. I will all to worship you. Mary, I adore you. I will all to worship you. Mary, I adore you. I will all to worship you. Listen, everyone in the wonderful name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Welcome to the Lord. May the Lord bless you. I thank you for the Lord that show grace and blessing to us. We can be together tonight just worship, praise, and glorify. Praise the Lord. So every brother, every sister, we welcome the house of the Lord. May the Lord bless you. If you're free, we welcome the local, the semite. May the Lord bless you. Every visitor, may the Lord bless you. Pretty dear brother, Elias, we welcome, may the Lord bless you. Our beloved brothers from Kenya. May the Lord bless you. Our beloved children, may the Lord bless you. Amen. Praise God. And the young. The Lord is the most important young one tonight. He is more than welcome tonight, Lord. Praise the Lord. He will give enough praise. Under expectation in the past, we may say, "Yahweh." So I have leave the pool before he pools me. Praise the Lord. Amen. So we welcome our precious brother, pastor Boytumelo. Matiba, amen. All the way from South Africa. So let's see, let's some Lord prepare me to be a sanctuary. May you prepare us tonight to be a sanctuary for you. God, you know, this young. You see, I make a little mistake, but the scripture say, "When you marry, the wife and the husband is one." So the sister is also be a place here. She decide as a wife, she be there. Was a brother last time when we were here. But she say, "Oh, it's lovely people. It's a beautiful country, it's very clean." So she wants to she for a young. Like the Pinocchio, I love her. Bless you, let's some Lord prepare me. I'll welcome the service of the Lord to you, the Lord, amen. Oh, Lord, prepare me to be a sanctuary. You're a loving giant truth. When they see me. I will be a living Oh, you. Lord, prepare me to be a sanctuary. You're a loving giant truth. When they see me. I will be a living Oh, you. I greet all of you in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. I greet all of you in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Certainly appreciate to be back in the media. I was here before Covid. Now I'm here after Covid. Certainly appreciate all of you. And then we appreciate the invitation by our dear pastor. We love, we respect him. We're here just to put our shoulder to the wheel. And as indicated, I'm not traveling alone. I've got my better half. Not a bitter half. Better half. Been married for 20 years. We have three kids. One is 19, the second one is 16. And the last one, being the girl, she's 10. She says she's my B.A. So we appreciate the Lord. And then let's just get into the business of the day. Talking tonight, I'm speaking to young people. But I know that even the elderly are meant to benefit greatly. We certainly appreciate the Lord. We will do much talking tonight. And we will do the preaching tomorrow. I want to speak to the young people from my heart. And they adventure, they may be a young person, maybe 20 years down the line. They may look back at the service and say, "From that night, I was never the same." That is my desire. Listen to the book of Romans 7. Romans 7, verse 19. You've written this manner. Maybe I'll read you it after me. And I believe everyone that is here is young. Either young in a physical form or young in heart. But we're all young tonight. It says, "For the good that..." I read, you read after me. "For the good that I would, I do not. For the evil which I would not, that I do." Now, if I do that I would not, it is no more I that do it. But sin that you let us. I find then a law. That when I would do good, evil is present with it. For I delight in the law of God. After the inward man. But I see another law in my members. Warring against the law of my mind. Bringing me into captivity to the law of sin. Which is in my members. Oh, wretched man that I am. Who shall deliver me from the body of this death? I thank God through Jesus Christ, our Lord. So then with the mind, I myself serve the law of God. And with the flesh, the law of sin. Let's bow heads, our gracious heavenly Father. Tonight, we appreciate you. Tonight, we appreciate you for wonderful songs that have been sung unto thee. Lord, we appreciate such a sweet anointing in this service, dear God. And may you bless our pastor. May you bless his dear wife and his dear family. May you bless the dear God, the local elders of the church. And the entire lady, dear God. May these meetings be of such great benefit to this assembly. Dear God, I don't know them much, but you know them. Because you've known them before the foundation. This morning, this evening, rather use me as your spokesperson. As your mouthpiece, dear God. May it not be my words, may it be your words. May not be my mind, but may it be your mind. May not be my spirit, but let it be your spirit. May not be my words, but let it be your words. May the Holy Spirit move from city to city. And minister to the needs of your people. Those that are sick, may they be healed in the name of Jesus Christ. Those that are heavy burden, may you lighten their burdens. May there be such a supernatural shift, dear God. That post this meetings, people will have a testimony that God descended and touched my heart. And dear God, we've got mothers that are here, maybe praying for their loved ones. The children that are out there under the authority of the word of God. We claim them wherever they are. In the name of Jesus Christ, we ask this thing of the Lord. Amen, amen. God bless you, rich people. Let you take the comfort of your sins. Tonight, I want to speak on a subject, overcoming the sticky nature. That's what I want to speak on. And I think the scripture that we just read, Paul was just being honest. As the messenger, he says, "There is this constant battle in me between good and evil." And I appreciate such messengers with such honesty. In the end time, we had a messenger that was honest as well. I've never had a minister coming behind the top to tell the people that I spoke a lie. I told the FBI a lie. But here's a messenger in the end time, vindicated by the pillar of fire. But he comes and says, "I spoke a lie and I had to repent." Don't you love such honesty? And tonight, I think this is what young people would appreciate. As they often say, real talk. Honest talk. Where we don't sugarcoat issues. Amen. Maybe before we get into the sermon, let me give my background. Background, I'm not referring to qualifications. I came in contact with the message when I was 30 years. And as a family, later on, at the age of 13 years, I got baptized in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Later on, the following year, when I was 14, we had a school trip somewhere to Durban. And we booked into a hotel. And we turned our hotel room into a church. And that's when I became a minister at the age of 14. Later on, went on. And at the age of 24, I got married to my wife. At the age of 25, I started leading a church. And I've been ministering for the past 30 years. So the reason I'm saying that, I want to say to you, the young people, I was a young message believer in school. I was a young message believer at university. I was a young message believer in my workplace. I worked for Coca-Cola for a number of years. And I'm just saying, whatever I'm going to speak about is based on personal experience. I lost my dad when I was 14 years of age. And I was raised by my old mother, a very gallant woman. And she lost her husband at the age of 35. And she just stuck with the Lord Jesus Christ. I remember, it was around 1994, I received a call. She had gone to check on him on the hospital and he had head stroke. And later on, when she left to the hospital, he passed away. And while she was in France City, during that time, they had no cell phones. So the hospital rang the house phone. And I was the one that picked up the call at the age of 14. And I was told that you need to deliver this to your mom, that her husband is normal. And I was the one that delivered the news to my mother. I saw how heartbroken she was. And from that moment, when I saw her in that state of brokenness, I made a decision that no matter what, as long as I remain under her roof, I'm gonna make life easier by being just a good boy. I think after my grace, I'm still a good boy. So I'm giving this just to make young people to understand. When we speak about fighting against Satan, the same Satan that you fight against, we fought against same Satan. We overcame Satan in our youth. And if we did, you certainly shall overcome Satan as well. Whatever God has done for us, he will do for you. Brother Brian says, we've got to train young people tomorrow. If the rapture tells, we need pastors, we need disciples, we need pastors' wives, we need the elders. And that's why the pastor took time so that I can come and speak to you. So let's just be attentive to that. As I'm not preaching, we will preach tomorrow. But we are going to speak. Now, the prophet, the message, "Come, follow me." In the paragraph 41, he says, he is referring to this young man that came to Jesus and said, "Look, I kept all the laws. What must I do to inherit the eternal life?" And the Lord said to him, "Sell everything and follow me." And Brother Brian says, "And the father and mother pray constantly that their son would turn out, would not turn out just an ordinary man, but he would be an extraordinary man." And it says, "All parents wanted that." This evening, we want to tell you, your parents would want you not to be ordinary, but to be extraordinary. And I much better speak what it means to be extraordinary. It doesn't mean having a beautiful house. It hasn't been having a beautiful car. Being extraordinary, it means the submission to the Holy Spirit and being a believer in the end time. And living an exemplary life until unbelievers look at you and they say, "We want our children to be like that child." It means being extraordinary. So the prophet says, "All parents wanted that." I personally wanted that for my kids. He says, "Did you hear Jesus refer to the commandment, 'Honor thy father and mother,' then stop?" See, that's the ambition of any parent. To do the best for their children that they can. Educate them, give them things maybe that they wasn't able to gain. That's the way I feel about my children. Are you still with me tonight? So your mom and dad, and a lot of times, you know, I was amazed that there was a couple that was doing a present ministry. And they were ministering to the inmates. And later on, they made a request from the inmates that just, they gave them the blank cards, a greeting card, and say, "Send this to all your debts." And they said, 98% of the inmates did not write anything. Later on, they requested them to write something to their mom. And almost 98% wrote something. Then they begin to, they picked up that the problem of our generation was fatherhood. That if a child does not have a father that they look up to naturally, it complicates their relationship with the heavenly Father. And I think this is quite a lot, especially about fathers in the message. We need, it takes a responsibility to be a godly father. I often agree that it takes a responsibility. And later on, even the present officials told them that whatever you do, don't mention fathers because it becomes a trigger point for the inmates. But I think in the message, we've got to do things differently. I mean, I agree that we've got to do things differently. Now, I'm going to speak to young people, often those that maybe were without fathers, like me. I didn't have a father until from the age of 14. And I always was preoccupied that I need to be the kind of father that I never had. So I'm saying, if you don't have a father, and maybe your father is not what you would expect, but you are a young man, you can raise that a new chapter. You can break a cycle in your family. It doesn't mean that if your father was like this, you need to be like that. And tonight, I'm here to speak to you and mandate you as what I may call a cycle breaker. That is, my grandfather was like this, my father was like this, but I'm not gonna be like that. By grace, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull a stop to this dilemma in this family. Things are gonna be different from going forward. My children are not gonna inherit this spirit. Are you still with me? Referring even to the sisters, it applies to you. Are you still with me? Trying to lay a foundation here. Now, the prophet carries on in the message, "Come, follow me." He says, it's paragraph 44. He says, "Do you know what? Eighty-six percent of the conversions to Jesus Christ is done before 21 years of age. Or 21 years old." It shows, statistics show it. Eighty-six percent that come to Christ come before they are 21. You are, after you pass that age, you become more molded and set in your ways. It's possible show, they come 70, 80 years old, but it's very rare. So now, even before I get into my message, if you are under the age of 21 and you have not been baptized in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, you would much better make a decision. Because the more you lean, it may be difficult to come here. When you were still young, Brother Brian says, what, he said, "The greatest regret that I have is that I could have served the Lord much earlier." And I can tell you as a young person that I've been in the message for long, there is no regrets. When you serve the Lord, there are absolutely no regrets. I compare myself to my classmates, I look at them today, and I say, "Lord, I thank you that you sent a prophet in the end time. I thank you that I had a mission to go to. I thank you that I had a pastor that I was under. And things have been different. And they can be different for you as well." So this is what we need as parents. We need to encourage our children. We need to do our utmost too, so that they come in when they are still young. My boy is 19 and the second one is 60. Both of them have been baptized in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. My girl should be baptized sometime this year, she's 10. And all of them will be baptized. And it's not by incident, coincidence. It's something that we were intentional about from home. What we did during the family alts. We wanted to show them that this generation is a very difficult generation. It's a very sinful generation. But God in this generation, he sent a prophet, a messenger. His message is the only way of escape in this generation. I'm gonna say it one more time. This message is the only way of escape in this generation. We need to tell our children, they must tell their children, that we thank God, God sent a prophet in the end time. Are you still with me? Now, when you raise the children, and here I'm, I'd much better speak to the parents as well. When you are sitting at home, you must teach your children to respect God's people. The only time when they hear you speak about God's people is when you say, "Sister so-and-so has got a request that was set in church. Shall we pray for them?" There is nothing as great as hearing your children praying for fellow believers. It instills a sense of responsibility. If they see somebody doing them wrong, teach them that the reason you are how you are is by the grace of God. Are you still with me? Now, the prophet of God says here in the message, "Come, follow me." I'm going to get into some things, we're gonna speak about temperament. We're gonna speak about quite a lot of things. And if I take much time, the pastor will pull my jacket. But in the 30 years that I preached, I've never been anywhere where people looked at their clock. I was in America and they came and said, "You didn't take much time, can't you go further?" I say, "That's a compliment for Americans to say to an African, you kept your time." Now, in the message, "Come, follow me," the prophet says, "You make yourself when you are young." You make yourself when you are young. And young people, before I get into this quotation, the old Thomas, most of them, when they came into the message, they always say, "We wish you would have come much earlier." And they say, "We could have avoided a lot of things in our life." So you being young as you are, you would much better come in when you are still young. It is gonna, going to help you to avoid a lot of things. It is difficult to live in this generation without God. It is difficult to live in this generation without saving Christ. But when you save Christ, it's a source of joy. I mean, when you save Christ, it gives your life a meaning. It gives your life a purpose. There's gonna be trials, but you're gonna hold on. Because one, you're not holding on, somebody's holding you. The old Thomas will tell you, there were times, life is not easy. There are times when we want to quit. But the reason we don't quit is because something is holding us. There are times when the devil thought you would not be in church, but we are still here. The devil thought you would never preach, we are still preaching. Even the devil thought this church would not be here, but the church is still here. Are you still with me? Sometimes the devil thought they would have run him wide off, but by grace, they are still here. What makes us to keep going on, like grace of God? So he says, "You make yourself when you are young." You set your ambitions to what you want to do and what you are trying to achieve in life. You think of it. And as you think, of course, your mind is presented into your mind by an unknown something that dominates your mind. The brother is telling you how an ambition is being formed. He says, "There is something unknown, something that is not visible to the human eye, that influences you to take a certain direction." Are you still with me? Then, he says, "Then when it becomes in your mind, then you speak it." That you are going to do it. Then your ambitions drive you to it. So you would much better be able to speak live over your life. Are you still with me? Are you with me tonight? Even you as parents, you must be able to speak live over your children. You must say, "My children are gonna be blessed. My children are gonna serve God. My children are gonna go forward." The more you say it, your confession brings your children under your confession. And I want to tell you, folks, it doesn't matter how evil the age is. My children are gonna be message believers. I'm gonna be painful, my children are gonna be message believers. I'm gonna be on my knees, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna confess it. And I think about what's happening in their lives. I am making a pronouncement upon their lives, they shall serve God. And tonight, allow me to make a pronouncement here. This young people, they shall serve God. This young people, they shall be the ambassadors of Christ in Namibia. Things will be difficult, but they shall be message believers in this country. And I'd much better say whether the devil likes it or not. Are you still with me? Now, before I reach the next quotation of the prophet, let me just give you a tip, young person. Whenever you are faced with a decision that you've got to make, always apply what I may call ten, ten, ten. I'll explain what I mean by that. You look at the decision that you are about to make. You must ask yourself, "How am I gonna feel about this decision in 10 days? How am I gonna feel about this decision in 10 months? How am I gonna feel about this decision in 10 years? There are certain decisions, when you make them, in 10 days, you may feel great. And in 10 months, you may feel greater. And in ten months, you may feel greater than what, but in ten months, you may regret. And there are certain decisions that you're going to make in ten days, they may make you feel miserable, like saving the Lord. In ten days, it may make you a subject of mockery on the school campus, at your workplace, in your neighborhood. In ten months, it still can make you feel like you are a subject of mockery. But in ten years, you're gonna look back and say, "Lord, I thank you that I made the right decision to serve God." And you will be like Caleb. Are you still with me? Now, the prophet says in this message by Phaedra Moses, paragraph seventy-seven, it says, "It may be this morning, in our case this evening, that there will be men and women sitting here that will make your final choice. You are today what you are because several years ago, you chose to be what you are now." So, when, when, when you want to get somewhere in life, take responsibility for your actions. Don't blame the government, don't blame the parents, don't blame the church. Take responsibility and say, "The reason I am what I am today is because several years ago, I made decisions that brought me to where I am today." Now, he carries on, he says, "You are today what you are because several years ago, you chose to be what you are now. And what you choose now will determine what you will be five years from today." Five years from today, you may be a missionary. Five years from today, you may be a renowned Christian. Or five years from today, you may be a herder, because you made the wrong decision. Five years from today, you may be clearing speeches in a barroom. Five years from today, you may be a prostitute on the street. Or you may be a man or a woman that's created to any society because of your choice for crime. Five years from today, you may be in glory, going in the rapture, because you made your choice today. So, tonight, as a young person, you are making your choice. But five years from today, your choice, you know, you've got the luxury to make choices, but you don't have the luxury to choose the consequences of your choices. Are you still with me? So, you would much better be sober when you make decisions in life. You know, I was looking statistically that as a human being, on average, you are faced with thousands of decisions on daily basis. And I realized that you cannot be able to make those decisions unless you are guided by the Holy Spirit. Let the Holy Spirit guide your choices. Are you still with me? And I can say, Brother Ron, in your message, what is the Holy Ghost given for? He says, "It is absolutely necessary, it is absolutely imperative, it is absolutely important, it is absolutely necessary that you receive the baptism of the Holy Ghost." Because without the Holy Ghost, there is no victory in this generation. So, just come to mom and papa's church. Make sure that you've got a personal experience with God. Just let me tell you something. Once you've got a personal experience with God, you know, you know, you can have that personal experience at the age of eighteen or fifteen, but it can last you through the entire of us. That as an eighteen-year-old woman, you come across certain difficulties, but you can take the devil back to those sacred grounds. Listen, devil, I didn't hear just about God. I'm not just a hearer of God, I've got experience about what I'm talking about. Tonight, I'm here, there are people in the building, they are just talking about God. They're not just preaching about God, they're not just singing about God, but they've got a personal experience about the God that they're speaking about. And let me tell you, it doesn't matter what happens in life, you can never talk them out of that experience. They slip on a path, but they remember the time when they came to the Lord. And I'm glad I can say, "I am one of them." And you can say, "I'm one of them." Of course, as long as we are living here, there will be problems. There will be problems in the family, there will be problems in your life, there will be problems in the church. But there's something that I can tell you, there are certain things that Satan will never change. And that is a personal experience that I forever have got with God. Maybe it doesn't matter to you, other people cannot turn back slide. But there are people that will never go back. I said, "There are people that will never go back, they're here for the long haul." Are you still with me? The prophet comes in the message, again, "Come, follow me." This message, you must go and read it when you are at home. It was with Brother Ron was speaking at a house meeting to young people. He says, "Being raised in a good home is a heritage from God. Don't take it for granted to have gone to the parents. Don't take it for granted to have gone to the pastor. Don't take it for granted to have gone to church. It's a support structure in your life." Are you still with me? Mom and Dad are gonna be there when everybody walks out of your life. Your friends are there when everything is going right. But if, if something was to happen, and you are on a wheelchair, it is that Godly mother that is gonna push the wheelchair. Your friends are not gonna be there, so listen to your parents. Being raised in a good home is a heritage from God. And to refine kids with personalities as you have, good. And you are a product of your home environment. Are you still with, and tomorrow, remember, you are going to be responsible for your home environment. You're gonna be a mom next time, you're gonna be a dad next time. Are you still with me? Now, Brother Ron speaks about the prodigal son. And when he speaks about, in that message, you know, we thank God for the prophet. The prophet is not like Brother Madin. The prophet, when he preaches the message, he breaks into a vision. And he sees what happened there in real time. When have you ever heard a man that would speak and say, "The serpent was more handsome than Adam?" It's because this man was able to comprehend. Are you still with me? In, in real time. And he could even look at the anatomy of the serpent and say, "He almost had a soul. He had a place for a soul, but he may have a soul." Are you still with me? Here is the man that tells you that there was Zakeos, the businessman, and he tells you the wife of Zakeos was Rebecca. And he tells you how Zakeos came to serve the Lord. It can only take a prophet of the hour. And we thank God for the prophet of the hour. Now, he tells us about the prodigal son. He says, "This prodigal son, he says, 'The first thing that went wrong in his life, he hung out with the wrong crowd.'" He says, "He began to have friends that he should not have." And he says, "He began to look at the family life and say, 'All we do in this home is church.'" And he got bored, he said, "Look, I want to experience life for myself. I need a part of my inheritance. I need to leave home and get to a place where I'm on my own. I want to, I want to find myself.'" He must have used the cliches that young people use today. "I want to discover myself. I want to be independent. I don't want to be a, 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 an mom and dad anymore." And Brother Ron says, "He went to the father, he went to the mother, and said, 'The mother began to agonize about the decision of his son.'" And he says, "He began to pack for him, and he says, 'Right there, he said to this boy, 'He says, 'Before you go, can we have one more family prayer?'" When reading that message, Brother Ron said they were staying on a year. And he said they had a family prayer, and he began to walk out of the house. And he says, "Going away from home, it was down here. It was easier leaving home, and he went back into the far country." When read what Brother Ron said, he said, "As long he had money, he had friends." I can imagine when he got to the far country with the kind of money that he had, he must have thrown parties. How many young children, young girls, were spoiled because of that boy? Because of the money that he had. And he said, "As long as he had money, he was popular with everyone. But later on, money ran out. And when money ran out, the friends left him. And later on, what did he do? As a Jewish boy, he found himself among the pigs. A Jewish that had nothing to do with pig, he had sung so low. And that's what the devil will do. He will promise you a mirage, but as soon as you will leave, it will meet difficulty after difficulty, and it will turn into a laughing stock." And how many young people in the message today, the devil has turned them into a laughing stock? And tonight, hear this preacher, "Don't become the devil's laughing stock. Reduce the devil's skin for it. Be a step past Christian, except I will hold on to the beliefs of mom and dad." And Brother Ron said, "He ended up eating husk." Husk is a denominational diet. But while he was there, among the pigs, he said, "I shall arise and go to my father." The prophet said, "He came to himself. It was a journey to come to himself, he came to an realization. "Look, I, I was born like this. This is not my environment, this is not my home. I shall arise and go back to my father." This was a young man coming to repentance, reflecting on his actions. Maybe it was like the old Samson, they say, "Lord, just once more. I need to go back home." And the master said, "If you were my son, I would not accept you." Young people, every time when you want to make it right with God, the devil is gonna pin you down. And he's gonna say, "Not you." But tell the devil that it's amazing grace. Tell the devil that it's the blood of Jesus Christ. Tell the devil that it's God and make it great. Tell him that he can forgive every sin. I want to submit to you tonight, God can forgive every sin. It doesn't matter how tight it is, God tonight, He can forgive every sin. And he began to leave the place, started going home. Now, going home now was uphill. He had lost weight, he was now skinny. He had lost the radiance of his skin. Things were difficult, he had gone pale. But now he's standing, he didn't have much strength. He didn't have much enthusiasm. But now he was going home, and going home now was uphill. I can imagine the people that he met along the way before he got home. Somebody have said, "Who are you? You look like suicide, so what happened to you? You, you are just a shadow of your former self." There must have been people that made mockery, but there was something that told him, "In my father's house, there is an abundance of love. In my father's house, there is an abundance of grace. In my father's house, there is an abundance of forgiveness. In my father's house, there is restoration. In my father's house, there is redemption. It doesn't matter where I come from, God is gonna make a way. I am going back to my father's house." And tonight, if you are that young person, may you arrive wherever you go. And tell the devil, "I'm done. I'm done and going back to my father's house." You know, when you're a boy, maybe you're just a child, maybe you have siblings. Later, maybe one of your siblings catches you stealing a hundred dollar from your mom's purse. And they say, "I caught you." And they say, "Look, I'm not gonna tell mom, but you owe me." And later on, when it is time for them to wash dishes, they point at your direction with their hands and go. And you start washing the dishes, even when it is not your time. Until mom ask what's going on, it's in so-and-so's time. And you say, "No, mom, these days are love. Washing dishes, it's just therapy for me." No, no, mom doesn't know you've become a slave, because when unconvinced, see. But later on, when mom is not around, when, when your sibling is not around, is out and playing with her friends, and you go to mom and say, "Mom, there was a time when I was tempted, and I took a hundred dollar note from your purse, but I'm here to repent. And mom says you are forgiven. Don't do it anymore, my child." And in the evening, when there is a stack of dishes in the sink, the sibling doesn't know what happened to them today. And they point at your direction and say, "It's your time." And they see you shaking your head. And they point again, they see you shaking your head. They wanna know what happened. What happened today, you've been forgiven. And tonight, I don't know what the devil might have done. I don't know what the devil knows about you. Maybe as we are rejoicing, he tells you that not you. But now you need to go back to papa. He said, "Papa, I'm very sorry. Forgive my unbelieving. I'm here repenting as your son. I'm here repenting as your daughter." And the next time when the devil says, "Not you," you say the devil, "I'm the right one. I'm the right one to glorify God. I'm the right one to say hallelujah in church, because my sins are no more." Are you with me? In the message, why, why is there strength gone, Samson? The prophet says, referring to Samson, Samson going into a bad company. Young people, you can overcome a lot of things, criticism, ridicule, but to overcome bad company is very difficult. You know, I, I, I've been, maybe I need to share it with you because I need just to keep it real tonight. When I came in, when we got to know the message, I was eight. And later on, I was baptized at thirteen, at fourteen, I'm a young minister. And for some reason, when we were at school, there were elections of prefects. And I became a prefect. Look how the devil, look how cunning the devil is. Then, they give me a portfolio that they called, it was a social portfolio. That means every Friday, I'm responsible to organize all the parties for the school. Do you see what the devil is doing? And just having that portfolio, I became very popular. Now, here is something, all the activities had to happen on Friday evening. But look how beautiful God will do things. Friday evening is the time when we have in church service. Now, I bring my stretch. Later on, I will arrange, I'll arrange whatever event that they have, and I will not attend because I have good respect for my mother. If I'm not in church, it's gonna be heartbroken. So, I will be in church. What event is going on at school? On Monday, they will look at me and say, "What happened to you?" I say, "I had to be in church." Do you see how the devil can be so cunning? What was happening? Bad company corrupts good morals. Now, he says, "You always can remember that when you are in bad company, you are out of the will of the Lord." My own, my own southern mom used to tell me, "If you lay down with a dog that's got fleas, you will get up with fleas." Says, "That's rather a rude expression, but it's got a lot of common. Every day sends to it. You just can't associate yourself with the things of the world and expect to stay spiritual and humble before the Lord. You are known by your company. You are known by company that..." Brother Ron says, "Show me your friends, and I will tell you who you are." This is not only for young people only, it goes across the board. Show me your friends, show me what excites you. Then I will tell you what kind of a man or what kind of a woman you are. Are you still with me? And, and here is something, remember, a person, in every church, there are three kinds of believers. Are you still with me? In every church, there is a believer, there is a make-believer, unbeliever. Therefore, you are a child. Sometime, we can be in the same church, but it doesn't... but it doesn't mean that we're gonna be friends. Our friendship is not based on association with the church. I must watch your life. I must watch where you are on Monday, on Tuesday, on Wednesday. Then I can decide whether you wanna be my friend. Come on, you know what I'm talking about. There are people that are Christians on Sunday, Monday, there are something else. There are people that wear long dresses on Sunday. By the time you meet them at the mall, you don't recognize them. Such people can never be friends of your child. You have every right to say to my child, "Not that one." The prophet says, now, coming to the most important part. Question and answers, thirty-one. Brannan says, "As long as you are in this life, you are going to be sticky and have a carnal nature that's going to bother you as long as you live." So I Paul says, "There is this constant battle in me." But he says, "But inside of you, you are born again. When you are raised up, you are in the likeness of Christ and all sin has gone from you." And that's where we want to get to, the sticky nature. And how to overcome a sticky nature. And what is this nature that is gonna bother you for the rest of your life? It doesn't care whether you are filled with the Holy Ghost. It will still bother you. But I want now, tonight, just to enlighten you on the sticky nature. Are you still with me? How many have heard Paul since we repent daily? This was the prophet messenger of the age. He says, "I die daily." Why he had to die daily? It's because there is a sticky nature. And when you are filled with the Holy Ghost, the Holy Ghost in you makes you to be sensitive to what you say. Are you still with me? Are there people in the world where you have spoken to somebody, but at night, you at night have this restlessness? That maybe I didn't speak to my brother well. I didn't speak to my sister well. It is the Holy Ghost in you. And if you don't have that, something is wrong. If you're just gonna run over people and talk the way you want to talk, something is wrong. A Holy Ghost made Christian is very sensitive to what they say. Are you still with me? Then the prophet says, the message, why are we so toast about 113? It says, "When Christ, the Holy Spirit comes into your heart, he is in you with your temperament. With your temperament. And he is giving his own life to his own will through you." He says, "Sounds awful, but it's right." So healed that you are, that Christ speaks the kind of way he would speak. He thinks the kind of thoughts he would think through you. He does the kind of works he would do through you. You are healed and resting. What a beautiful picture of a consecrated Christian. Healed, Christ working through you. But I want to stay with the key statement that I want you to pick up is that, when Christ, the Holy Spirit comes into you, it is in you with your temperament. And I want to follow up, what is a temperament? The prophet was our example. Prophet was our template. He says, "The message led by the Holy Spirit", he says, "You don't know, see, I am a temperamental person. Melancholy sort of a person. I can't let myself get away. Satan takes advantage of that on me." Are you hearing what the prophet is saying? He says, "I've got this temperament. It's melancholy. And he says, the devil, from time to time, he takes advantage of my temperament." And I want to say, if the devil can take advantage of the prophet's temperament, he surely will take advantage of your temperament. And if the prophet say, "I'm melancholy", that means he knew his temperament and he knew how it affected him. He knew how it made him vulnerable to the devil. We're gonna get into few things, young people. And even the elderly that are here. Are you still with me? How many, how many agree that Brother Brannan was an over thinker? An over thinker is the person that crosses the bridges before they get to them. It is a person that solves problems that don't exist. It's a problem, probably that will find cues to the sicknesses that they don't have. And there are over thinkers even here. And we are going to get into the details of this temperament. So why am I taking time to show you? So that the devil cannot take advantage of you. That you know which gaps to close in your life. And the Holy Spirit will help you to overcome a sticky nature. But I need to make you aware, what is a sticky nature? So that when it raises a face, you know that is that old devil and you can suppress it with the help of the Holy Spirit. Are you still with me? Brother Brannan speaks to a woman on the platform. During desertment, he says, "Sister, you have had trouble. You are extremely nervous. And your nervousness is what's making you have trouble. It's a nervous heart. You have all kinds of funny thoughts go through your mind. That's right, from that nervous, you get real nervous in the late of the evening, especially before sundown. Get kindly, funny feeling. Lonesome, melancholy feelings." The people that have got a temperament of melancholy, when we go to sleep, they don't sleep. They are replaying the day. They are blaming themselves. Did I say the right thing over there? Or are you still with me? And then right there, the devil is taking advantage of them. And say, "Look what you said, what a horrible person you are." And what's happened, right there, they begin to feel depressed. And later on, unless the Holy Spirit helps them, then they will sink into depression. Are you still with me? And tonight, by grace, we're gonna defeat the demon of depression. We're gonna defeat the demon of overthink. We're gonna defeat the demon of complex. Are you still with me? It is easy to develop a complex. Even in church, it's easy to develop a complex. You can have a complex towards the pastor. You can have a complex towards your wife or towards your husband. Are you still... But, but when you know, like the prophet would know that I'm behaving a complex, then he's able to overcome that spirit. Are you, are you still with me tonight? So now, we are finding out that Brother Brannan's temperament was melancholy. Now, we do have, the next slide, my brother. We've got, you may not see, but we'll get to the other part. We do have four temperaments. We've got melancholy. We've got what we call sanguine. We've got what we call choleric. And we've got what we call phlegmatic. The prophet was melancholic. And we're going to explain to you what we mean by being melancholic. Are you still with me? Now, when you are melancholic, Mida's here. A lot of times, melancholic people, how many have heard Brother Brannan says, "My wife has got to put up with my mood." He says, "I'm a moody person" because he was melancholic. Brother Brannan, and a lot of times, he preferred to be alone. That's why he would go on to the hunting trip. And people may have perceived him to be less social. But it's because he was melancholic. But back into the hotel room, he breaches the cells again. The servant said, "Again, what is..." He was a perfectionist. It's because of his temperament. So that's why a lot of times he would say, "I have said a lot of things that I should have not said, Mida." And a lot of times, you remember, there was a time where he said, "I'd rather go away and if Joseph finds my Bible, then I would be gone." And how many times Brother Brannan wanted to commit suicide? Are you still with me? It was the devil taking advantage of his temperament. You know, you've seen it in the life story. After the death of his daughter and his wife, he wanted to blow out his brains. And later on, he wanted to hold an electrical wire. All of that is because the devil was taking advantage of his temperament. And even our young people, the devil will take advantage of your temperament. That's when he comes with gloomy thoughts. Are you still with me? When he makes you feel less of a believer. Most of the time, Brother Brannan, he meets a young person. He says, "The devil has tried to convince you that you have crossed the line between mercy and judgment." He says, "Don't believe in him." It's what the devil is taking advantage of our temperament. Are you still with me? We're gonna get into a few things you wanna understand. Are you still with me? Then there is phlegmatic. I'm gonna go to coming to Bible characters, you're gonna see interesting things. Or maybe if I get to the phlegmatic, the sanguine. And Brother Peter in the Bible was a sanguine. Whenever they gathered, Peter was always a spokesperson. Are you still with me? And he always overpromised and underdelivered. "Lord, I will never forsake you." But he was the first one to run away. Are you still with me? He's a sanguine. And the day of Pentecost, he was a spokesperson. He spoke so eloquently. Now, when you are of the temperament of a sanguine, eh, you know, when a, when a sister is a sanguine or even a brother, eh, this one, they dress well. If they sing a song here, after a trench, they are waiting for everybody to turn them. What a beautiful song. If nobody tells them, they'll go home depressed. Come on, you know what I'm talking about. Even before they come and sing a song, there will be a preamble. They will talk about how this song is such a blessing. How it has touched my heart. I hope it will be a blessing to you. And if it doesn't become a blessing, they're gonna become miserable. Are you still with me? These are the people, whenever something good is happening in their lives, they want to post it on WhatsApp. That everybody must see that where I am, who I'm with, and how I'm dressed and what is now. Are you still with me? It is a temperament that they have. And if they are not careful, the devil can take advantage of their temperament. And hear me, there is no good temperament. All of them are good. And all of them are bad. Are you still with me? Then, we, we have what we call choleric. These ones, often, they will use this statement, "Straight talk doesn't break any friendship." What is happening? They are trying to cover up for their lack of empathy. But I say it as it is. Whether you like it or you don't like it. These people, they, for them, they are more obsessed, "It must be done." They're more goal orientated. Whether they hate people in doing it, it has to be done. Are you still with me? Sometimes, they can be perceived to be rude. And I'm going to come into the Bible characters. You will see them in the Bible. Then there are people that are phlegmatic. They come to church, they never do anything. They are there in the background. They are more cautious. For them to do anything, the pastor must come to them and encourage them. Are you still with me? Now, here is where you need to get it. So imagine if a brother that is choleric, who is very firm and is married to a sister that is melancholy. And they are not aware of their sticky natures, this brother can drive the sister to a suicide. Are you with me? Are you enjoying what we are talking about? That's what I'm preaching, we are talking. Maybe let me give an example. When a choleric person is driving down the road and they find a roadblock. Maybe they find a traffic cop, he pulls him over. The first thing that they're gonna tell the traffic cop is that, as soon as they see a traffic cop pulling them over and say, "He's wasting my time. I'm in a hurry." When a sanguine person sees a traffic cop and the traffic cop pulls them over, before the traffic cop would say anything, they have already shared a joke. They are bubbly. Their energy is contagious. Are you still with me? Now, a melancholic, a phlegmatic person, as soon as they see a traffic cop, they, they wonder, "Do I have my driver's license? Is everything right?" Then a melancholic person, as soon as they see the traffic cop, they see that, "I'm in prison." It's a temperament. Are you, are you, are you with me, Paul? Are you with me, Paul? Now, if a sister that is a sanguine is married to a brother that is a sanguine, nine out of ten times, they may go into debt. Because they live for now. Whatever they need, truth will be by now. Wherever we want to go, we go now. I don't care, are you getting where I'm going? And if a sister is choleric and a brother is choleric, the, the house will always be on fire. The pastor will always be told, "I'm about to kill her, I'm about to kill you." Are you getting what I'm talking about? And, and these characters, you'll find them in churches, where? Are you still with me? If a pastor is a phlegmatic, he wants to encourage everybody else, he's got a deacon who is choleric. The deacon will say, "You know, this pastor is a walkover. You know, people must not come with nonsense, they must be sorted out." Are we still doing very well in time? I want to go through them. Choleric, the next slide, my brother. They are quick. Don't worry if you don't see it. They are egocentric. It's about how they see it, how they feel it. If they come, if a, a choleric brother comes to the pastor and say, "Pastor, we must do this." And the pastor doesn't do it, he gets offended. Because their temperament is my, my way, other than mine. They don't have the ability to compromise. Alright, let me pass here. Let me go into Bible characters. Brother Paul, first messenger of the age, was a choleric person. He told it as it is. He didn't care what you thought. He will just deliver it on your doorstep. Now, let me show you how people can disagree without the matter at hand being an issue, but you find that it's just their sticky nature. Brother Paul in Acts 15, my brother, bring the next slide. And some days after Paul said unto Barnabas, "Brother Barnabas, let us go again and visit our brethren in every city where we have preached the will of the Lord and see how they do." And Barnabas determined to take with them John, whose surname was Mark. But Paul thought not good to take him with them, who departed from them from Paphelia and went not with them to the work. So, Brother Barnabas says, "We, let's go and visit the brethren. But let's go with John Mark." Paul says, "No. There was a time when we were with John Mark and he left us. We are not going with the brother again because we've got more time to play." Are you very well remaining in it? Are, are you here? But Barnabas, because his temperament is phlegmatic, he wants to take Brother John Mark to encourage him. He doesn't care what happened previously. He wants to focus now that we need to take our brother. Let's forget the power. Brother Paul says, "Look, we give a man one chance. He messes up, there's no more chance." Look how, how the temperaments clashed. The contention was so sharp between them that they departed asunder one from the other. And so Barnabas took Mark and sailed into Cyprus. And Paul chose Silas and departed, being recommended by the brethren unto the grace of God. Their difference was not doctrinaire. Are you still with me? It had nothing to do with the scripture. It was a conflict of temperaments. How many times in church we disagree, but it has nothing to do with the scripture. It's just a clash of temperaments. And the devil is taking advantage of our temperaments to bring divisions in the church. How many times in marriage we disagree, but the matter at hand is so less important, but it's a matter of temperament. Are you with me tonight? I want to follow up on Brother Paul. Now, a sangwe person, most of people that are sangwe, they can be hypocritical. You will never pick up whether they really enjoy the place or not. Are you with me? You know you are there. You can be given something, you eat, but you don't enjoy it, but you are raving about it, "This is so delicious." My goodness, this recipe, where do you find it? But meanwhile, you say, "My goodness." Are you still with me? Most evangelists are like that. You can feed them a rat, they will rave about the rat. By the time they come back home to give a missionary report, they say, "We ate the rat, what a terrible dish." But when they were there, they were enjoying the rat. Now, Peter was such a person. Now, when you are a young person, you are a sangwe, that's where the devil can take advantage of your temperament and make you fight to be accepted, even by wrong people. Sangwe, they thrive on acceptancy. If you are a young girl and you are a sangwe, and you thrive on compliments, but the Holy Spirit doesn't help you to determine the source of compliment, you may end up getting compliments from a wrong source that can lead you to a destruction. Are you with me tonight? And the devil will be taking advantage of your temperament. Now, let's follow up Brother Paul. Galatians 2:11. "But when Peter was come to Antioch, I always stood him to the face, because he was to be blamed. For before that citizen came from James, he did eat with the Gentiles; but when they were come, he withdrew and separated himself, fearing them which were of circumcision." The temperament of Peter, he's got the Jews, he's got the Gentiles, he's eating with the Gentiles. As soon as the Jews come, he pretends that he doesn't know the Gentiles. Now he sticks with the Jews, because he fears those that are of circumcision. He wants to be accepted. If it was possible, secretly he would go to the Gentiles, secretly he would go to the Jews. But look at now, the temperament of people. He sees that, he doesn't say, "We're gonna pray about it." He says, "Brother, we're gonna address it face to face." And he said, "I always stood him face to face." Are you still with me? Do you have such people? And when you are a choleric brother, and you are married to a melancholic sister, and there are visitors, and there is disagreement, and you address it before the visitors, you are destroying your wife. You may hide behind, "Straight talk doesn't break any friendship", but you are not sensitive. I have observed young people that are more of a sangwe temperament, especially brothers. They lose interest in whatever they do. They say, you meet them, "Oh, brother, I'm studying to be an artisan." Next you meet them, "I'm studying marketing." They say, "I'm studying..." Are you getting what I'm saying? There is no consistency. And the devil is taking advantage of their temperament. They do something, they get bored, they move on, they never complete anything. Isn't it helpful, Alex? Now, Timothy was phlegmatic. He was gifted, but he was fearful. He was gifted, but he was cautious. Then Paul picked it up and spent most of the time encouraging Timothy. Are you still with me? 2 Timothy 1, "Paul, an apostle of Jesus Christ, by the will of God." Are you getting his temperament there? Not by the will of me. Whether you like it or you don't like it, I'm an apostle. By the will of God. Whether you accept me or not, I'm an apostle. Are you still with me? "According to the promise of life, which is in Christ Jesus. To Timothy, my dearly beloved son, grace, mercy, and peace from God, the Father of Christ Jesus, our Lord. When I call to remember the unfail'd faith that is in thee, we shall join fast in thy grandmother Lys and thy mother Eunice. I am persuaded that in thee also." He's trying to encourage Timothy. He says, "For therefore I put thee in remembrance that thou stir up the gift of God, which is in thee, by the putting of my hands." He's trying to, you see, he's trying to encourage Timothy, who's very cautious, he's phlegmatic, he's got to be in the front line. But Timothy comes and says, "You can do it." That's why in church, we have people that can do so much for the church, but they are cautious, they are careful, they are afraid because of their temperament. They need someone to say, "My sister, do you know that you are such a blessing? Do you know that you blessed us last week? And you haven't sung for two months? Why don't you wanna give us a special? These people, they must be encouraged. Are you still with me? Remember, when we are here, God is a God of variety. We've got the sangwe, we've got the phlegmatic, we've got the choleric. All these things, they must work together. But all of us, we must know who we are, so that the sticky nature can never overcome us. Are you still with me? And the melancholic, I'm still gonna come back there. You be thoughts. And the devil is crazy. All these constant negative thoughts that are running in your mind. Sometimes he takes advantage of your background. He tells you unworthy. And all of a sudden, in church, you see a sister that used to be welcomed. All of a sudden, they don't take care of themselves, things are deteriorating. And now, when believers lack discernment, then they begin to cause perusing that sister, not knowing that she may be sinking into depression. She needs somebody to come and say, "My sister, I'm gonna work with you, I'm gonna pray with you, I'm gonna team up with you against Satan. I'm gonna encourage you, I'm gonna check on you." Are you still with me? What I'm trying to paint tonight, all of us, we are going through battles of some sort. And the devil is taking advantage of our temperament. And tonight, by grace, because we realize that, when the Holy Spirit helps us to overcome our sticky nature. Moses as well was melancholic. Here's a confusing thing about melancholic. You know, Brother Brenham, I think you must have heard where Brother Billy Paul says, Brother Brenham would speak with authority behind the pulpit and say, "I take every spirit under my control." But it says, "When we are on the hunting trip, he cries like a baby." Moses can take control of everything, but later on, he's got moments of self-doubt. It's because the devil is taking advantage of your temperament. Are you with me? If time permitted, I was gonna read you, where I think it was John was writing to another local assembly. And in that church, there was an elder who was choleric. Every time when letters arrived for them to be read to the church, that man said, "They will not be read here." If visitors, ministers come and they sleep over at the believers' homes, this one will keep them out of the church. Is that in the Bible? What's happening? And John says, "When I come, I will address it." That's why, in a family, we must never be afraid of each other and give each other feedback. During family meetings, there are times where, don't say much, just say, "We're gonna take few minutes" and say how each of us in the family can improve on themselves. And a child speaks to the father, "Dad, we think you can improve on this." A mom speaks to the dad, "We can improve on this." After they are done with the father, there is the mother. After they are done with the mother, is the child. Because the family that is frank with each other is gonna go far. Are you with me? Now, I'm going to, as I'm about to close. I was in Guyana, and I did the temperament, and I was hosted by a family. And immediately observed that the whole family, they were of one temperament. Phlegmatic. After I picked up that all of them are phlegmatic, I said to them, "I can tell you that should somebody visit you, and they have no intention of leaving, none of you is gonna address it." The father said, "You don't know." They laughed and said, "It happened, Brother Maniba." There was someone that came here and stayed for three to six months, and we couldn't tell them anything. Why? It's because he's phlegmatic. People can take advantage of you. But if it was a choleric, by tomorrow, it'll be gone. And tonight, I want you to look into the mirror of the wheel. What is your temperament? And your temperament, what is it that the devil is taking advantage of you as far as your temperament is concerned? Some of you are people pleasers, you cannot say no. Your overbended, your family, your extended family members, they are putting and piling burden on you, until it is creating a difficulty for you, because you can't say no, because they are taking advantage of your temperament. But tonight, we say, by grace, may you overcome your sticky nature. May you be able to take hold of your temperament, and by the help of the Holy Spirit, may you bring your temperament under the subjection of the will of God, that you are yes must be a yes, and you are no must be a no. I know the temperament of my wife, I know my temperament, I know the temperament of my children. Now, introducing. How? How many parents that are here, that are gonna be honest, that have ever been accused by any of their child of favoritism? Okay, we have all been there. Now, and how many got confused by the accusation? That, "Chris, I don't have favoritism, you're all my children, I love you the same." You know what is the problem? Is that the way you love a choleric child, and the way you love a sangwe child, and the way you love a phlegmatic child, and the way you love a melancholic child, is not the same. Your manner of loving can connect with one kid while it's been rejected by the rest. A choleric child, when they've got something happening at school, they don't mind if you don't go, because they want to show you that they are independent. But when you don't support a phlegmatic child, they interpret it as though you are not interested. Now, you are gonna say, "Why with so-and-so, I don't have to be at school? They go, they do whatever they do, and they come back and they give me a feedback." You do not understand their temperament. When I preached this in Trinidad, a minute after the service, a minister came to me and said, "Lord, thank you. I did not understand one of my sons. He is withdrawn, he spends most of the time in the room. I did not realize that he's melancholic, and we are failing as a family to connect with him. And he realized that something not being done, that boy, the devil may have driven him to suicide." Pass on, let me stop here, we will continue tomorrow. Good blessings. For a hidden one of the messages. I believe it is in everyone, and something tonight. Believe you didn't miss anything, man. You're staying together. Oh, what a life. Being friends all the time. Today's Friday. It's the best place that I could, that I could be. Thank you, Lord Jesus. Give even praise to the Lord, man. Turn around, your brother, your sister, tell them, "Let's work together. I need you. Let's pray for another man." Hallelujah. Oh, you have one in your spirit. Thank you, Lord Jesus. Oh, you can work on him, you know. Oh, I am a child of God, this will be it, man. Oh, I'm a crossbow, this way to be. Oh, yes, begone, God, to begone, I am, oh, you, man. I am a child of God. Oh, you are reborn, you, man. What I am, oh, with melody. With my melody. Oh, it's sunny, you're sunny. The song of the blessing, man. Oh, amen. Oh, myself, man. Oh, I am a man. Hallelujah. Oh, I'm a man. Oh, I'm a lunge. I'm a lunge, this way to be. Oh, yes, I'm a child of God, you, man. I am a child of God. Oh, I'm a lunge. I'm a lunge, this way to be. I am a child of God. I'm a lunge, this way to be. Yes, I do. I am a child of God. I'm a lunge, this way to be. I am a child of God. I am a child of God. Ah. Holy Spirit, I need you. Oh, come, sweet spirit. Oh, come, sweet spirit, I pray. Oh, come in thy strength, amen. Oh, come in thy strength and thy power. Oh, Lord. I need you. Okay, everybody, stand up, stand up again. Oh, yes, I'm a spirit. Oh, I'm no. Ah. Holy Spirit, I need you. Oh, come, Holy Spirit, I pray. Oh, come in thy strength, amen. Oh, yes, Lord, I control myself. Oh, my brother and sister. I will get a miracle myself, amen. Oh, yes, God. In thy name. Oh, yes, Lord. Oh, my brother and sister, please, oh, come, no. Ah. Holy Spirit. Oh. I need you. Oh, with my friend, oh. Oh, come, sweet spirit. Oh, my brother and sister. Oh, I have one place I would change me, Lord. Oh, come, in thy strength, amen. My God. Oh, let's have this day. Let me borrow a sugary hand. As a song, please, sweetly and softly, amen. Let's just raise our hands, amen, we heard, amen. Now it's time for us to check within ourselves. Lord, I love this song and say, not just deliver from people, but deliver for myself. And tonight, I want you to raise up your hand, amen. Don't point to, don't point to the door, anybody else. But tonight, we have the privilege to hear the word and to act not on the word, to make a decision upon the word. Lord, I raise my hand too, Lord, I need your help, Lord. As a musician, please, oh, let's pray for one another, Lord. You can pray for your child, you can pray for your friend. You can pray for your husband, for your wife. You can pray for the pastor. The pastor can pray for the congregation. You can pray to me, I need your prayer, I need your help. Yes, we have, I can see. Help us. Holy Spirit. In God, a joy that glows my soul. Singing on the roof of heaven. And now I go. Jesus touch me, baby. He goes. Oh, yes, Lord, you touch me. Oh, you touch me. In God, a joy that glows my soul. Oh, yes, Lord, you step me, man. I go, oh, yes, Lord, you touch me. And now I go. Jesus touch me, baby. Oh, let's sing a song in the house. He touch me. Oh, yes, Lord, you touch me. I go. He touch my soul. Oh, Sanvi, oh, Sanvi. Oh, just remember. And now I go. Jesus you touch me, baby. He goes. Hallelujah. Thank you, Lord Jesus. Oh, let's have this day. Oh, thank you, Jesus. Oh, my brother and sister. Oh, thank you, Lord Jesus. Oh, hallelujah. Oh, we praise you, Lord. Oh, we magnify your name. We lift up your holy name. Thank you, Lord, Lord, one and all, my Jesus. Oh, thank you, Lord Jesus. Hallelujah. Thank you, Lord. Bless both eyes, amen. Give me what's amazing, amen. By the many times. You know, thank you, Jesus. Oh, Lord Jesus. Great of all things, Lord. We are so privileged, Lord. Yes, Lord Jesus, hallelujah. You send us a prophet, Lord. Hallelujah. Oh, go into your mind, Lord. And brought forth, there's the Savior of the Lord. And we are so privileged, Lord, that we recognize that voice. That voice for the stint time, Lord. That voice for the space, Lord. Hallelujah. Oh, hallelujah. Oh, it is a revelation, Lord. Hallelujah, it has been revealed, Lord. That evening, Lord, hallelujah, we came in your house, Lord, as needy people, Lord. Oh, desire, Lord, to hear from you. And we are not disappointed. Because you are the God that we know disappoint, Lord. You are the same yesterday, today and forever. You created a variety of men to worship you, Lord. You gave birth, we give you all the honor, all the glory, hallelujah. We thank you, Lord Jesus, for your ascension that's given you. Things that we cannot understand, Lord. But Lord, hallelujah, you are the one, Lord, who knows everything. Who knows every heart. Who knows every need, Lord, hallelujah. Thank you, Lord Jesus, for your ministry that you brought here, Lord. Your ministry to your right, to bring, hallelujah, amen, a break of life, hallelujah. And come and break it, Lord, amongst your people. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you for the songs that we can sing. Just to praise your name, to love your name, ah, Lord. To say, "Thank you, Lord." Hallelujah. I know, Lord, this service to life was never in vain. Because, Lord, it was for your purpose. And you have reached your purpose, that your word that went forth will never return void, but will bring forth a body to its kind. Hallelujah. We thank you, Lord. We know, Lord, we came in here. Hallelujah. Some bodies were sick, Lord. Some bodies were tired, Lord. Some bodies were disappointed, Lord. But you came with restoration, that evening, hallelujah. You restored, hallelujah, amen, we are tired bodies. You restored, pray, troubled bodies. You restored and you healed sick bodies, because you are the same. Yes, the pain, to die and forever. Lord, we are looking forward, Lord, for tomorrow. Because, hallelujah, since you hope tomorrow, amen, we can face tomorrow. Because you hope the tomorrow. Hallelujah. Because you love, we can face tomorrow. Lord, we are going home, Lord. We are so faithful when we put down, hallelujah. Oh, because men shall not love by bread, Lord, but by every word, hallelujah, that comes out of the mouth of our Lord Jesus. Thank you, Lord Jesus. We are on our way home, Lord. Lord, hallelujah, we want to be part here with you, Lord. Hallelujah, we want you, Lord, to accompany us, Lord. Because without you, Lord, hallelujah, we will not reach our destination. We depend upon you, Lord, and we thank you, Lord, that you are our God. We trust you, Lord. Thank you for traveling mercy. Thank you, Lord, for everything that you have done. Bless your servants. Bless the musicians. Hallelujah. The chorus leader. Bless your pride, hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus, we give you all the honor, all the glory. We pray in the precious name of our beloved Lord, Jesus Christ. Hallelujah. Thank you, Lord Jesus.